She just liked one of my gifts.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay, it's nine o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Delaware County Council Meeting, October 26, 2021, here in the Delaware County Commissioner's Courtroom. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Denise, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, you start us last on your way.
River out. It's such a good job. How's the river out your way? We don't get close to the river. Boy, it's way up.
And Steve, would you give us a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
All right, first up, we have two public hearings, both of them on solar farms. We'll do these separately. The first one is for Hawthorne Solar LLC. And if anybody's here to speak either for or against, please come up to the podium. You have something to say, Brad, or?
I was going to present, but I'll hold until the resolutions, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, we've got to have the public hearings first.
Very good.
For both, and then we'll, a couple of formalities, and then we'll move into the resolutions. Second call for anybody to speak either for or against for Hawthorne Solar LLC. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Hawthorne Solar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper.
Ballard.
Second from Ballard. Any discussion from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
I had a question. I don't, I didn't get the information on Hawthorne for some reason.
Last meeting?
I got the Meadow Ford Solar.
Yeah, it was together. I sent it together, you can look at mine.
Right past there. Thank you.
I'll need it back.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Obstain.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Meadow Forge. That's the other solar that we've got on the agenda today. Anybody here to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Second call, anybody? Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Meadow Forge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ballard. Oh, that's your first name there again, we're going back and forth, aren't we?
Yeah.
It's different meetings. Any discussion from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Obstain.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, now on to the regular meeting. Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
Okay, I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions or discussion from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes. Okay, again, questions from the public can be directed to the County Council email address countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. Any public comment or questions from, to councilmen can be made throughout the month as well, and we will have public comment towards the end of the agenda here today, so. Let's see, I need, I need an approval of the September 28 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second. I didn't catch that. Ballard, okay. Any questions, corrections, changes? If not, roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. On the agenda, I've got a table from September, the project income. We're going to just move that down to the ordinances, transfers, and move right into the, I guess Hawthorne Solar. Is that who you have up first, Brad? That'd be fine.
Thank you. Good morning, council. It's nice to see all of you today. As we had discussed at the meeting last month, we went through the application in detail, and then also heard from the company as well. Today, I'm going to kind of paraphrase that application. I'm not going to spend as much time on them. However, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to answer questions, and the company is here to address those questions as well. So the first project is the Meadow Forge Energy LLC. 16,500 North 600 West Gaston, Indiana, is the location of the proposed project. The proposed project is new equipment to be purchased, solar modules, solar racking equipment, project substation, transformers, solar inverters, fencing, cable, gravel, et cetera. The purpose of the investment is to generate electricity for a power provider or corporation. The estimated purchase price of the equipment and the total project is estimated at $155 million. The company currently has no tax liabilities in Delaware County. There are no judgments, liens, or pending litigation against the company. The company's been in business for 21 years. They estimate to create 150 temporary construction worker jobs, and then two permanent operating and maintenance jobs, salary of at least $52,000 for the operating and maintenance worker jobs. They have made their $150 payment to the county for their application. They have provided the SB 1. I've provided you with the resolution that their council and the county council, and I believe your council, have all had an opportunity to review. There is a map of the project included with the resolution that you were provided. And the final document is from Baker Tilly, and this is just an estimate because it has not, the project has not been assessed yet. But with the proposed development over the life of the development would generate $32,765,860 in new revenue to the county during that same period of time, or actually just for the start of the project. The tax abatement would be $5,090,320. So this is a revenue positive abatement. The company's here to discuss any questions or answer your questions. If none, we appreciate your support of the resolution today to approve this project.
Any questions from council?
I had a question on page two. It refers to the cost of the new manufacturing equipment. Is that the way that should state? Is this is not a manufacturing operation? It's item one and two at the bottom there. It's in both of those paragraphs.
Ron, we're on the Meadow Forge solar resolution. Are you on Meadow Forge?
Yeah.
Okay.
How to afford solar energy?
I think where he's talking, Brad, is about halfway down the page number one and number two. In there, it states estimate of the cost of new manufacturing equipment.
I, I see that point now, Ron. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, Kyle, would you like to address that?
Good morning, council. My name is Kyle Russiteritz with Denzil Law Firm in Indianapolis, 10 West Market Street. I represent the developer. Councilmember Quakenbush, manufacturing equipment is, is the designation of the majority of the utility distributable property. So if you might be familiar with the SB 1 application form for tax abatement, there'll be a designation of the type of equipment to be installed. The, primarily, the 95% of the invest, of the project's investment will be in utility distributable property, and so purposes of classification for utility distributable property, it falls within the manufacturing equipment designation on the SB 1. And so that's the...
Is the broad definition, yeah?
Correct. And so that broad definition of manufacturing equipment includes the vast majority of the project's investment. So, so sort of a nomenclature definitional reference to manufacturing equipment rather than our maybe general understanding of what, of what manufacturing equipment is.
Well, I'm an old factory worker, so...
Yes, sir.
Started out my life as a toolmaker, so I think of manufacturing differently than probably most people.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks for the explanation.
Who will receive this power from these collectors? Will it be the local facility, AEP?
Tom, do you want to address that?
Sure. Yeah, good morning, council. Tom Scoder from Invenergy. Pleasure to see you all again, and thanks for the time. The receiver of this power is, is to be determined, but we will look to partner with either utility companies or large corporations who have a demand for renewable electricity.
So you may supply it direct? You'll have the ability to supply power direct to a customer or consumer, large consumer?
Yes, directly to a larger corporation, wouldn't be to a residential consumer per se.
I understand that.
Yeah, but exactly, directly to a larger corporation or a utility company. Yep.
You may have already covered this last time, but if you could, again, what's the start, start time, estimated start time, estimated finish?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So we are still tracking right along with our, our permit application. We're compiling all those materials, kind of see next year as a further continuation of that process to get everything buttoned up for the project. Ideally, we would be starting construction in early 2023, and the hope would be to be completing the project by the middle of 2024. That's our, our current goal with this project.
I believe you probably covered it also in the last meeting. We brought up the aesthetics, the screening around the perimeter of the facility. Went over a little bit about that. Has there been any developments on that as far as locking in what kind of, will it be trees, plants, fencing? What kind of, what kind of is in the plans for that?
Yeah, so another good question. We worked with, with Marta Moody in the zoning department when she was looking at her ordinance for solar. So we believe we really found a good middle ground, makes it possible for development, but also protects the citizens of Delaware County. So there is a set buffer plan in the ordinance that we have to abide by, so we're actually putting the finishing touches on our landscaping plan with our application right now. But yes, to your point, we do have a number of trees, shrubs around non-participating homes, and then we're also going to look to use more of a traditional agricultural fence, gear fencing, as opposed to chain link. We just think that matches the aesthetic of the surrounding project area better.
If I remember correctly, didn't Marta say that the plants and trees and shrubbery wouldn't just be on the perimeter, it would actually be within the facility, in between solar panels, correct? Is that correct? Did I hear that wrong?
Yes, so, yeah, to clarify, we will have meadow grasses in between the, the panel rows themselves, but for the interest of not losing energy production with shading from trees and things like that, there will be no trees directly in between the panel rows. That's only going to be around those non-participating residences with the project.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
That's pretty well spelled out in the zoning and planning that was put together. Is that, is that right, Brad?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, it's a requirement of the...
The ordinance really, a lot of work was put into that from Marta Moody and her staff and others, but that really dictates these projects and is really been the driver that has now allowed for these projects to proceed forward.
Any other questions from council? I think we need a motion.
We need a number.
We've got, let's see. This is resolution number 2021-037. Is that correct? Okay.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any further discussion? Bill, have you taken a look at the contracts and...
Yeah, I reviewed the, the resolution and the attachments. Also, council has furnished their required statement of benefits, and I reviewed that this morning, and it's in good order, so I think everything's ready for final action.
Okay, thank you.
Can I tell a little anecdotal story, as I usually do?
Sure.
Okay. In the mid 70s, I flew to Waco, Texas on my own dime and signed up for a franchise for solar collectors, and I put solar collectors and hot water heaters in new homes at the time. They were working on what they call photo votage at the time to try to build collectors that would produce electricity. And we're to that point now, that many years later.
Okay, any further questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Obstain.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Brad, now we're ready to move on to Hawthorne.
All right, we'll advance in pretty much the same order as before. The name of the company is Hawthorne Solar LLC. The equipment is to be located on State Road 6728, south of Albany. There are various parcel numbers that were provided in the application. It's basically on both sides of the state highway, just east and north of the Muncie Drag Strip. The address is, the company is 227B South Side Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. It's where the parent company is located. They plan to purchase new equipment, considered racking, protoville, solar modules, inverters, wiring, and other associated equipment for the production of solar electricity. It will be utilized to develop a 75-megawatt estimated solar power electric generation facility. Purchase price of the equipment for this project is $88 million. The new equipment is being brought from out of state. Currently, this agricultural property where this is to be located has an assessed value of $1,290 per acre. It's anticipated to increase. They are current on all of their tax liabilities. They have no judgment liens or pending litigation against the company. They were incorporated in 2019. The parent company is, name is Norenco, National Renewable Energy Corporation. They've been in business in solar development since 2009, have developed over 400 megawatts of installed solar capacity. New employees, they estimate over 200 workers during the time of construction on the project, and then two to seven direct hires for the actual project once it's, it's complete. The starting wage would be $18 to $22 an hour, estimated around $60,000 a year is the average wage for the permanent employees. They have made their $150 check to the Delaware County Treasurer for the application. They have provided us with their SB 1, a map of the project. This project, over the life of the project, would generate $19,223,470 in new revenue to the county. The proposed abatement for the first 10 years of the project is $3,340,150. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and the company is here today as well.
Thanks, Brad. Any questions from council?
I do have one question. It'd probably be for someone with the company, and this is just something out of curiosity. Probably should have asked another first gentleman. We talked about the aesthetics around the facility. I'm sure with Marta being involved, yours will have a similar component to it. Are there any negative impacts as far as local wildlife when you take a field like that and you fill it full of solar panels?
That answer, that question's probably best answered by biologist, but I think anecdotal evidence and past history of solar development show that it doesn't affect it. Wildlife are fairly diverse, they have the ability to move around. I believe the ordinance also provides requirements for pathways through solar development, so it's going to allow the, the animals to travel through large areas that are fenced in. And also, I think there are prohibitions on lake effects for birds flying over. So the ordinance is fairly encompassing with respect to protection of wildlife. And again, like I said, with the solar developments that we've seen, you know, I think that it's fairly safe to say that there's, you know, no negative impact on wildlife associated with its development.
Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve this as resolution number 2021-38.
So, second.
38, is that right? Denise, okay.
Yes.
Motion.
Ballard.
Motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Okay. Any further discussion from council? You have a start and an end date to this one by chance? First start and a completion?
So start date's looking to be Q4 of 2024, and then probably completing sometime later in 2025.
Okay, thank you. There's no more question. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Obstain.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
You.
Uh huh, thank you very much.
All right, we don't have any ordinances. We are ready for transfer and financial agenda. I want to check with Bill, though. We've got...
Diane Dash.
We've got, this was the, the table from September.
Yep.
For project income. That has been, that is on, the new one is on the transfer agenda, so we don't need that one. Should we go ahead and remove that from the table now, or should we do the finance and transfer first, and then...
When you get to the, when you get that to that on the agenda, let's remove it from the table at that point.
Okay, all right.
That's where we are.
We're ready. Start with transfers, please.
Ms. Nurse C, 124 Veteran Service Officer, minus $655. B, 124 Veteran Service Officer, plus $655. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. And Finance Committee, this, this was to pay, pay the previous director out the rest of the way. I guess there was a miscalculation in what that was to be, and they were a little more owed, so that's what this one was. Any questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Communication Center, excuse me. I, 121, minus $831. D, 126, plus $831. F, 123, minus $9,600. I, 121, minus $4,400. That should say overtime, 196, plus $14,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Piper, second from Webb. Okay. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Clerk, 198, part-time, minus $859. A, 117, Deputy Clerk, plus $859. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Rick, since you drove all this way, would you like to say something?
Absolutely. I apologize for not making it the other day. This was just a calculation error I made myself, as a matter of fact, putting in as the last, last budget, so we had to correct some numbers so we could pay a lady the rest of the year.
Any questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Circuit Court, C, 139, minus 2,000. 441 office equipment, plus 2,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. I'll just explain this one, I guess. Emily called last month, and there was a change in the, in the software that required them to get new monitors for, for part of their computers because they were still on the old box type, and I guess we still have several that are on the old box type. So she asked me if she could go ahead and do this, and, and I said, I can't tell you that, but she's got a letter from the judges that she sent out telling her that, you know, from, they were giving her permission to go ahead and make this expenditure because it had to be done, or they wouldn't be able to operate out there, so. Any other questions? Go ahead. I think, well, we've got somebody from the courts. Okay, I was supposed to take it easy on you, according to Emily.
Carrie Buck, Court Administrator Assistant.
I don't know if I explained that very well, can you?
Yeah, so Odyssey did an upgrade, and they didn't let us know that our computer monitors weren't going to be capable of viewing the whole display. And there was, I guess, 14 people that didn't have the larger monitors. They still had the two of the square, so we had to purchase it to where they could be able to work properly in that system.
These are the old CRT-type monitors, you know, the square, big box, heavy.
The boat anchor.
Heavy ones, not flat screens that, that they had to replace. And thus, and basically what was happening is when the software came on, you couldn't see what you needed to see to be able to, to do what you were doing there.
The system went live in the new system on October 11th, so we had to make, make the purchase before, prior to that.
Yeah, well, and I think you would have liked more notice to be able to upgrade those.
He didn't know.
Yeah, yep, yep.
So does this cover all of them? All, all 14?
Yes. Yeah.
Just got to mention something about a few others. Are there any others, obviously, outside of that, or is this going to affect other departments that anybody know of, or?
I, as far as, just for the courts, this is just for us.
Yeah, this is court-specific software upgrade.
Okay.
So they, they just upgrade and not let anybody know what type of equipment they're going to need for the upgrade, right? I mean, is that what it is, rolled with ice, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably do for new monitors anyway, those old type.
It was an already existing program they were on, but when they did the upgrade, but, you know, really honestly, I mean, we probably shouldn't have any of these big old monitors around anymore, but we do.
Well, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah.
It's just, God forbid, anybody let anybody know.
This was just out of the ordinary because Emily never does that. That's why she did all that she did, made the phone call, had the judge.
Well, she's in a national court management program, and she's, so she's in class today.
Yeah.
So.
Do they normally notify the courts, the software company, when they're doing an upgrade?
Well, we had like a program we could go in and like play around with, but they didn't give us any, like, what we needed to make this system run properly.
How long have we had Odyssey? Not that long, have we?
Hmm, more than five years.
So is there?
Lucky those monitors weren't on a boat out in the ocean someplace.
Well, that was the other issue that Emily explained. They were a little harder to get than usual, so she was able to get some.
So is there going to be any cost associated with disposal of those old monitors?
No, we actually are storing them in case the other, the court personnel, they have two monitors. So they have a square one and then a larger one. So if the square ones go out, then we'll just swap them out.
So you'd have it as emergency use and you could only see, you just wouldn't be able to see the edges, basically?
Some of them had.
Even on the rectangular monitors.
Yeah, they just use it on the, yeah.
Yeah, Ryan, some of them had two square monitors of the old.
Yeah.
When I say square, I'm talking about the big, heavy ones.
Gotcha.
In there, so.
I got you.
Any other questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Family Support A. 109 minus 4,275.39. B. 109 plus 4,275.39. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Discussion from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Prosecutor B. 110 minus 4,914. C. 110 plus 4,914. 103 minus $226.46. 117 Investigator minus $446.35. 185 Transcripts minus $1,827.19. A. 109 Investigator plus 2,500. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I believe the sheriff's been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yeah, this, all of 129 down through there has been withdrawn.
Hey jail, F. 134 minus $99.51. B. 135 plus $49.35. D. 152 Corporal plus $50.16. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel?
Yeah, was it?
Roll call please, Steve. Oh, go ahead.
I was just curious, with such a small amount, was this like a clerical error or something? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, you want to remove the table first, so you have to go ahead and read it?
This is on.
Is it the same as it was?
No, it's a different amount.
Remove it from the table and then move to amend it to those amounts.
Okay. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to remove this line item from the table from last month.
So approved.
And amend it to be with these new amounts.
That's my motion.
Make that an all one motion. Okay, let's do the motion first. I need a second.
Second.
On Jane's to take it off the table?
Yes, second.
Second from Piper. Roll call please, Steve. This is on taking it off the table.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, now that it's off the table, I need a motion to amend it to. You want, wanted to go ahead and read it in, yeah?
A. 140 Surveillance Officer minus $12,394. 311 Contract Monitoring plus $12,394. Total request zero.
Move as amended?
Second.
Okay, motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion to approve as amended.
I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Highway B. 109 Purchasing Agent minus 9,000. C. 109 Purchasing Agent plus 9,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from a couple of people down there. Jane?
Yes.
All right, all right. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Pretrial Diversion 101 minus 4,914. A. 101 plus 4,914. B. 103 minus 3,903. C. 103 plus 3,903. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Ron.
A motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Prosecutor Lit, A. 103, oh, minus $4,914. B. 103 plus $4,914. 172 perf minus 2,431. A. 119 plus 2,431. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from.
Ron.
Quakenbush. Any questions from counsel? You may want to get up and, I've got some notes from Finance Committee. You may want to get up and explain this. Just so everybody's on the same page.
So you're talking about the 172 perf minus, because that's really the only, the other one's just a transfer?
Yeah, yeah.
So we had a deputy prosecutor retire and didn't realize she had vacation days left. So she came back asking for the money that she was due for her vacation days. So I just found it in perf and that's why the transfer's there, so we can pay her her vacation days that she so deserves.
That was within this year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Sheriff Lit, A. 101 minus 14,627.15. B. 101 plus 14,627.15. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter, I think. Okay. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Hey, the first addendum is A. 112 minus 1,500. A. 128 minus 1,000. 194 Training plus 2,500. 198 Part-Time minus $325. A. 128 minus 1,000. 129 OIC plus $1,325. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, A. 143 minus 13,416.41. B. 143 plus 13,416.41. C. 113 minus 6,183.25. D. 113 plus 6,183.25. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. All right. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Highway C. 144 minus 23,000. D. 144 plus 23,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I can't, I can't hear you all the way down there. Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is really the jail lit. So it's B. 103 minus 8,604.50. C. 104 plus 8,604.50. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Piper, second from Webb. Is that number the same? Is it 1170?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I've got the change in there because we fixed that at Finance.
I was going to ask you that. Mine's, I got B. 104. Is that the same, what she said, 103?
Do what?
Mine said B. 104.
Yeah.
I thought you said B. 103.
Oh.
I'm sorry. That's correct.
B. 104 to C. 104, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I think that's all on the first addendum. Second addendum, Commissioners 173 Health Insurance minus 60,000. 324 Telephones plus 60,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel?
I have a question, Jenny. So is this 60,000 going to carry us through the rest of the year on the telephones? Or are we anticipating the additional asks?
Hopefully that does carry us through the rest of the year. The biggest influx in the phones this year is roughly a monthly $7,700 AT&amp;T bill for all the fiber connectivity. So we knew it was coming, but we didn't know how much before budget hearings last year. So there wasn't really, you know, any consideration for it. But yeah, this should, after looking at monthly bills with Becky, this should hopefully get us through.
Is that a general increase for everybody?
This is just our, the Commissioner's telephone line item, to my understanding, is the only one that's been affected by this. So our new phone system in general that we have is actually cheaper than our old system. So it's not the new phone system. This is totally separate from that. This is all the fiber connectivity.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
You may not know, but we paid quite a bit of money to put a fiber optics line from Communication Center over there to the Communication Center in the building that was purchased from the library.
Oh, okay.
Are we paying for that line now, or can that be?
So you're saying the Communication Center now in the old library?
The Communication Center that was in the old jail.
Okay, and, okay, gotcha.
Was moved to the library building when they bought that Genealogy Building. We had to pay quite a bit of money to, I don't remember the numbers, but to put fiber optics over to that current Communication Center.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering if we're still paying for that service, and that actually needs to be disconnected since that building has been.
That's a good question. I've taken note of that. I'll look into that and I'll email you and let you know what I learned. AT&amp;T has been doing really well with us through all these transitions over the last year of weeding out any old circuits that aren't in use. In fact, just yesterday, five were instructed to be disconnected that are not in use after some research. So our IT and AT&amp;T are working really well to stay on top of that. So, um, our IT and AT&amp;T are working really well to stay on top of that. But I'll let you know on this one specifically.
Well, some, some folks may not realize that that was added at the time.
Sure.
The Commissioners, the, the current Commissioners had no recollection of that because that purchase was done back a couple of elections.
Terms ago.
Three elections ago, I don't know, it's been, been a while now. I, I think Todd Donatty was on the Commissioners Board then, so.
For my time as well.
Does Jim Fluke work with all, does Jim Fluke work with all of that on our behalf or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
You might as well stay up there because I think we got another transfer.
Sure.
Do you know about this or not?
Did you vote on this one?
No, we need to vote on this one.
Oh, I guess we need to vote on that one, yeah. I thought we already did.
Nope.
I knew somebody'd set me straight. Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, now in, um, in finance on the, um, the Commissioners for, um, part-time, there was 50,000 for part-time. And I know Becky was there, but she's not here today, but.
She's here.
She's back there.
Oh, yep, she is back there. You were quiet.
The appropriation's gonna be withdrawn, right?
Yeah, the appropriation's withdrawn and that needs to be made a transfer.
Here's the new numbers.
Okay.
For the transfer, 198 part-time plus 50,000. 173 health insurance minus 50,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Uh, motion from Piper, second from Webb. I know we talked about this in the, in the finance meeting for, for a little while, I guess, on why, why we're having so much part-time and.
Sure. So Ron asked me to do about a three-year search. Um, Becky assisted me with that. So in 2019, um, this account was at 110,000, which this year it's at 95,000, so keep that in mind. Um, and we only had to move 2,500 in it that year. Last year, when it was down to 95,000, um, we moved quite a bit into it. So we moved about 30,000 once, 2,000 another time, and then towards the end of last year, another 25,000. And then this year, again, still at the 95,000. And prior to today, we've moved in another 30,000 and 15,000. Um, so the biggest, um, jumps in this account, of course, are going to be, um, the salary ordinances being amended. We've had two people go from 12 to 15 an hour. That's what I think is probably the biggest. And then, of course, the jumping from 110 to 95,000 to begin with.
But it's, it's the same number of part-time employees from 2019 to '21 that hasn't changed.
Yeah, to my understanding, it's, it's still the same. And I just lost mine. She's, um, finishing her masters and I'm not refilling mine. Um, I think there's another department under us who might be losing their part-timer and they're gonna do the same. They're gonna hold off on rehiring for four or five months. Um, so hopefully we'll see that, you know, get a little better next year.
And you said some of the changes that you guys are doing with moving around some offices and stuff might help as well.
That's helped, that's why I'm not gonna replace mine.
Yeah.
Because the part-timer that's in HR will basically buffer my office as well now that we have a shared space.
So with the, uh, increase, you said, uh, some salary increases from $12 to $15 an hour?
Mm-hmm.
Have you noticed, has that been beneficial to, um, retaining the part-time employees?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, there's certainly some other areas, you know, where some room like that could be done as well. But yeah, these two employees, um, uh, so the mailroom specifically, um, when the new Justice Center opened, um, our mail guy was not comfortable with transporting unsealed mail around the county from building to building, um, just for liability purposes for himself. So he asked, um, to be bonded, um, for that coverage. And, um, when you're bonded, that kind of moves you into a different, um, part-time pay bracket. Um, and then how her weights and measures part-timer, once she, of course, learned of that, she was smart and did her due diligence and said, well, hey, I handle money and this, that, and the other. And her boss, of course, the inspector, is bonded, so she got bonded as well, which bumped her up into that. Um, that one I really went to bat for because not only was the bonding, um, valid, um, but she's also been with the county for about 10 years and, um, can be called upon at any day and time to help anywhere needed. And she's right there, ready to work. She's not afraid to work, so, so those are those two.
That's one of the positions that used to be full-time too, for years.
Yes, and I was gonna note on that, thanks, Ron. So also keep in mind, roughly four to five of these part-timers, um, are in our maintenance department. And all of them were at one point in time, full-time employees with full benefits and everything. So, over the, and that was, how long ago was that, Ron? Maybe seven or eight years when that was changed?
When we had the tax caps come in, yeah.
So. A little bit of history.
What kind of money does the weights and measures handle?
Um, when they have to serve fines for people not working within state guidelines. And our inspector's really good about giving people those notices to avoid that. And so it's those that are aware and choose not to work within the guidelines and so they issue the fines. I know, for example, right now, he's waiting on a $1,000 fine to, to come in, so. It's not incredibly common, but happens nonetheless.
But that goes to the treasurer, doesn't it? They don't collect it?
I believe it goes into their.
They bring it in and we do a quaidus.
Yeah.
They actually bring in the check from the person. Okay, gotcha. It don't happen very often, but, yeah. Wow. They'll bring down the check and we do a quaidus and they take it next door.
We've been talking for a while. We got a motion on the table?
Yep.
Is that right? Any other questions from council? Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, thank you.
Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, financial agenda. Papers together here. Okay, so the first one, Commissioners, I'm assuming it's withdrawn? Is that correct?
The, um, the part-time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's withdrawn, yep.
So move on to Edit. 300 Edit Projects, $2 million. Total request, $2 million.
Move to approve?
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Yeah, I was just curious exactly like what the Edit projects, projects are.
Sat down too early.
There's a mint in my mouth, sorry. Um, so the plan, um, is still current. It's 2019 to 2022, so it will end in July. Um, so the, there's been one project added for, um, 2022 that was just approved at our last meeting. I wanna say it's like 100 grand for some neighborhood things. I don't know all the details.
Neighborhood grant program.
Mm-hmm. So this will bas- basically fund the remainder of the plan. Um, like I said, it ends in July and we'll move into a new plan then. And I will also add, um, specifically Project 11, we've, we've paid out quite a bit. Um, we had to, some unexpected expenditures this year. Of course, you all probably remember the 795,000 we paid out to AT&amp;T for the new phone system for 911. Um, we were supposed to get almost half of that reimbursed, um, but it was learned after receiving the reimbursement that because of the type of grant it was, could not reimburse Edit. So we lost on about 300,000 to 400,000 there. And then we, um, paid about 215,000 for some BIS equipment for the courts. So that was about a million dollars between those two right there. So, recouping some of that will be helpful.
Well, actually, this is an appropriation to follow the plan that we've already approved.
Right. Same plan, end in July, yep.
Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
GIS COVID grant, 441, equipment, 5,000. Total request, 5,000.
Move to approve?
Hang on a minute, there's, uh, Casa.
Casa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I sat down and I was like, oh.
That's why we're all here.
Maybe we're skipping it for some reason.
Yeah, I marked my sheet wrong. Um, sorry about that. Okay, so we have 171 FICA, $15, 173 health insurance, 2,100, 175 LTD, STD, $180. Total request, 2,295.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter?
Or Webb?
Webb.
Webb? He was pointing down here, so that's why I went with Lassiter. He was pointing down.
Good to Miss J.
I could, I could see his pen. Okay, so Lassiter's the second?
Yes.
All right, got that settled. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, now, GIS COVID grant, 441 equipment, 5,000. Total request, 5,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. This was, um, I know we covered this in finance. This was another, um, Ball Brothers grant, uh, to help out with that and we appreciate that. Any other questions from council?
And that will clear out all that money, right?
He'll have all this money appropriated.
Okay, okay.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Bridge Community Crossing Grant. The count number should say 310, not 312. 51,569. Add additional 310 for 64,625. These are both contractual services. Total request, 116,194.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. I'll just say who I think it is and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, so. You wanna, uh, just tell the locations on that again?
Okay. So the first one, the 51,000, that is a small structure replacement on 800 East between Eaton Albany Pike and Granville. And the 64,000 is a, um, pipelining and it is on County Road 1100 North between State Road 3 and 150 East.
Any questions from council?
Is that a spray-on process or do they put a sleeve in?
I believe it's a sleeve, but I'm not 100% on that.
Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Highway Community Crossing Grant, Contractual Services. The count number should say 310. Total request, 353,455.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. I know we brought up in, uh, in finance, that's, uh, right on County Road 600 West, right where we just approved for.
That is correct. Um, we were awarded this money in April, so it was prior to all the solar farm work. Um, we did not get our money from the state until September. But yeah, it is gonna affect this roadway that is paved and it is in the contract for, um, the Commissioners that it has to be put back the same way it was. And Tommy said that everything will be droned and pictured before and after.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And Ron had a question of how long this was and it was roughly around four miles.
Thank you.
Yeah, that goes from, uh, the town of Gaston on 600.
To the Grant County line.
To the Grant County line. And I just noticed in the maps that we approved earlier, about three miles of that is along that same area where the solar farms are, but those agreements are in place, so.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, Highway Restricted Contractual Services, 312, 353,455. Total request, 353,455.
Move to approve?
Motion from, um, Piper, second from Ballard.
Don't miss that, 310 or 312. You changed the rest of it to 312.
That one might be 312.
It is, 312.
Okay, thank you.
What's this project?
This is our portion of the match money. So with the Community Crossing Grant, we have to put up 50%. So the project is roughly 700,000 and so this 353 is what we have to pay for. So it's, um, for the 600 West project.
Got it.
Thank you.
I know you pointed that out in the finance, but these are restricted funds and.
Yes, and it can only be used on roadwork. No employee cost, anything like that, just strictly roadwork.
A 50/50 split? I always thought it was a 50/50 split where it could be used as rug, rug, work, road. Sound it out, right? Roadwork or payroll?
Not, not on this. Not this grant.
It's still the same restricted.
It's the restricted, but, um.
When the money comes in.
I always thought, and, and this doesn't mean anything, but I just thought 50% of that was saved for payroll. It could only be used for that. And then 50% of that was used for paving and only paving.
We can only, we can only use.
Monthly, it's split 50%.
Right, goes to restricted and non-restricted. So this is coming out of the restricted portion.
Okay, I, now I'm with you, all right.
Kind of an interesting, um, adventure, I guess you would call it. Back when the state legislature was pushing real hard for counties to create a wheel tax, they were putting all kind of pressure. I even attended a meeting in Grant County where the state legislators held. And we eventually passed the wheel tax, which can only be used for paving. And then a few years later, they start restricting our motor vehicle money, which that wheel tax was supposed to bring in more money to, more revenue to pave roads with. I, I, I can't understand sometimes the logic some of these people have, that they, they force a new tax on the taxpayer, which was kind of a fair tax because you pay so much for trucks and your car and all that stuff to pay for the roadways. But now we can't use but half of that money to operate the Highway Department.
Yeah, and they're working on new legislation to get that 50% reduced possibly to 25 or even do away with it.
Well, that's good because that was not fair.
Yeah, they're, it's in the works to get that corrected supposedly.
If they wanted to be mean about it, they could've said the counties that didn't pass a wheel tax would have to do the 50/50. But the, the ones that did, we did it to try to help increase revenue for paving without hurting.
Since learned it's hurt the, 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 that 50% that goes in to pay your employees and all your other stuff. A lot of counties are hurting on that side, so there's, last couple of schools we've been to, we've talked about it.
So it was equipment, trucks?
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Yeah, so.
It wasn't just cutting, uh, salaries.
Everything but paving, basically, that comes out of the regular MVA. So it, they're working on passing new legislation to change that.
In fact, I was not really totally for the wheel tax at the time and, uh, proposed a sunset clause in the original ordinance. And then after three years, uh, it came, had to come back up for vote again and it seemed to be working real good and I voted yes. Probably would've voted no the next time if it only run, take our money away from us.
Roll call, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
EMA Small Engine Aircraft Grant, 441 equipment, 5,000. Total request, 5,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
All I can say is, does anybody know George Orwell?
Hold on, I got a motion from Piper, second from Webb.
Yes.
Sorry, Scott. Big Brother's gonna be watching us with his little plane.
And this is another, um, Ball Brothers grant too, so thank you for that.
And like the GIS, this appropriates all the rest of the money.
Yeah, I'm glad you cleared, I was gonna ask that too. So that's it for that one, right?
Correct.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right. I move to approve financial transfers and amendments to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, under committee reports, I've got appointments down there, and I do have somebody. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, I do have somebody that has expressed some interest in that, and seems fairly excited to be on the Yorktown Library Board. And that's Carolyn Klein Gant, who's, lives in Yorktown, in the town of Yorktown, and would be willing to serve on that. I would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter.
Ryan.
Really? Okay.
That was Mr. Ballard.
Okay.
My voice a little.
I didn't open mine.
I don't know. You guys are going to have to make it more direct again. Who was it?
It was Ballard.
It was Ballard.
All right, it's Ballard.
It just sounded like me.
It sounded like you.
It's one of you.
Really? I couldn't hear it, blowing up. Okay. Now that we got that figured out. Roll call, please, Steve. I guess I need to get some hearing help.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I didn't have any coffee this morning, but that shouldn't affect my hearing, I don't think. Maybe it is.
Maybe it didn't open it up.
All right, any department heads or elected officials?
I'd like to make a comment about the budget hearings, if I may, since this is on the web or whatever that camera is up there. I'd like to compliment and thank my fellow council members for their due diligence. We held a lot of meetings. Scott motivated us as well as guided us through it. It's been the toughest budget hearing I've been in, including two terms as accounting commissioner, and the time when we had to literally reduce force by 26 people. But this particular budget hearing was just a bit complicated, and I compliment you all for getting us through it. Thank you very much.
Well, it was definitely a team effort. We're not there yet. We've still got to get a vote on Thursday yet to approve that budget so that Donna can move it on. But yeah, I mean, really, the last, the last two years have been really difficult and stressful for everybody. I mean, not just people up here, but the people that work the budget and all the department heads. And we know that. We're hoping the next few years start to improve from here on out, but. Anybody else?
One other point, too. We haven't borrowed a dime this year so far, but we're getting close, right, Donna?
Nope.
Nope.
Not right now.
We're okay.
Should be, should be okay.
First year in several years now.
That budget come Thursday.
It's the next year that I'm worried about.
23 is supposed to be, next year is going to be a little difficult, because 23, we're supposed to lose more money, so.
All right, any public comment? Can we have a sheet out? Is there? Is there anybody on the sheet? Do we know? If they're here, they'd be up here.
All they have to do is sign in.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I the only one?
I don't know. Anybody else on the sheet? TJ?
Uh, no, me.
Okay, all right.
All right, if you would, guys, I know I'm supposed to get three minutes. If you can indulge me for four, I'd appreciate it, since I'm the only one up here. I'm trying to make it brief. All right, my name's Captain Tony Johnson, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. I'd like to thank council in their effort in resolving our pay disparity in this current budget process. While the steps taken were recognized, I would like to point out that there's still a lot of work to be done. Our agency will have to wait and see if your actions will be enough to keep our talented deputies and correction officers that serve Delaware County from leaving for higher payer opportunities. I would also ask that you start making plans for this, for next year's budget process, and continue to work on closing this pay gap. This problem will not go away without significant action from this council. So there's been some talk recently about a pay grievance with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, and I wanted to explain how this grievance came to be. In 2020, the Delaware County Sheriff's Office was part of a collective bargaining unit. This unit was represented by the UAW and had a signed contract with the Delaware County Commissioners. A provision in this contract stated that when the county building was closed, department personnel who worked would be entitled to time and a half pay on top of their regular eight hours pay. During the COVID pandemic, the county commissioners closed the county building starting on March 23rd, and it remained closed through May 5th. When this happened, the sheriff's administration took steps to mitigate the cost to the county. Offices were closed, and deputies that were not essential were sent home. Only deputies and supervisors that were needed to ensure public safety and service were allowed to work. Jail staffing was reduced to minimum needed to run the jail. We did our part to keep wages and costs as low as possible during this time. Soon after this, the county building, soon after the closing of the county building, the commissioners announced that they were not going to pay the overtime as stated in the contract. Overtime requests were denied. When this declaration was made, the decision was made by this department to return to full staffing in the office and in the jail, because after all, we'd never close. I would like to point out that during the COVID pandemic, correction officers were exposed to infected inmates. They had to deal with the risks associated with these exposures, and they had to take these risks back home to their families. The deputies in the department also served their communities. They were forced to interact with COVID-positive citizens in the course of their daily duties. Several of our officers would end up contracting COVID. And several family members would also contract this disease from their spouses who were out doing their jobs. In accordance with the contract, a grievance was filed for a violation regarding the pay. The overall cost of this grievance was in the area of $400,000. And then came the CARES Act. The CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, was a $2.2 trillion stimulus that was signed March 27th of 2020. $1 billion was given to Indiana, and $3.5 million was given to Delaware County. The county commissioners adopted a resolution where the auditor was to prepare and submit payroll reports for gross salaries of qualified public safety and health employees. A qualified employee was defined by the Association of Indiana Counties as sheriffs and deputy sheriffs, correctional officers, detention officers, and those who support such employees, such as dispatchers and supervisory personnel. The commissioners agreed at the time that they would use the funding to pay the sheriff's office the monies that they were owed. However, this money didn't go to the commissioners. It was deposited into the County General Fund and was dispersed by the auditor without oversight from the council. So why am I here? This body was given $3.5 million for salaries and wages incurred by the COVID-19 pandemic. $400,000 of that money should be paid to the men and women of the sheriff's office who supported the community as per the contract that was in place at the time. All personnel should be paid, as all fall into the qualified payroll expenses as defined by the Association of Counties. I'm about to give you documentation to review, and I'm available should you guys have any questions or concerns. I believe almost all of you have my phone number. At the next council meeting, I would like to see someone bring a motion that this grievance be settled and all qualified personnel are paid. The deputies and the correctional staff of this department served their communities when they were needed most, and the federal funds were given to you to reimburse us for our service. And I'd ask you to do the right thing and authorize the pay that we're entitled to. And I have three things for you guys. You guys, you guys may already have this, I don't mean to insult anybody.